Good evening, everyone. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Newton City Council. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Kelly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all this evening. I'll remind everyone here, we are being both audiotaped and videotaped. I don't see any, oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Wright is participating remotely. That is the only remote participation we have this evening. We are going to start off with a commendation for the Newton North High School girls gymnastics team. I'm going to invite my colleagues up in just a moment. That will be followed by going into a committee of the whole led by Chair Gentile to discuss the water and sewer and stormwater rates for the upcoming year. After that discussion and committee of the whole is concluded, we are going to resume our full council meeting. We will go into first call. And then we will go right to second call. There is one item in second call, the Northland item. So with that, I'm going to invite Councillors Albright, Mickley, and Lucas to the podium. I'm going to ask the the girls gymnastics team to come forward, please, and join us up on the on the podium. And before we begin, parents, feel free to come up closer if you'd like to take pictures. Want to make sure you have an opportunity to do that now and certainly at the conclusion of the proclamation.
Coaches can come up to to the podium if they want. So the Newton North High School gymnastics team, for their outstanding accomplishments, whereas the Newton North High School gymnastics team had an exceptional and outstanding season, earning first place at the New England Gymnastic Championship, and whereas the Newton North High School gymnastics team's win was their first ever at the New England Gymnastic Championship, and whereas the Newton North High School gymnastics team placed first in the bars and the vault and took second place in the beam and the floor, and whereas the Newton North High School gymnastics team also broke their school record four times during the regular season.
Now therefore be it known that in recognition of the Newton North High School gymnastics team's unparalleled achievements, the Honorable City Council representing the entire city of Newton congratulates the members of their accomplishments and for their accomplishments. Resolution offered this fifth day of May on behalf of the Newton City Council and the City of Newton by Councillors Susan S. Albright, Tariq Lucas, and David Mickley, and we are so proud of you.
So I'm a senior. I am one of the captains aside with Sophia Ducacus. And this team, I can say is like, I'm so proud of everything that we have done and accomplished. I would have never expected this, but it has been a dream of mine for a really long time, and I'm glad that all of our hard work finally paid off. So, yes.
Hi, I'm Cassie Ford. I'm the head coach of the gymnastics team. Just echoing what Molly said, I'm extremely proud of everything that the team accomplished this year. They broke a lot of school records. They did things that no other team in Newton has done or Newton North has done in the past. Just kind of makes me excited for the future and what else we can do. So, thanks, everybody.
So, parents, you're welcome to take pictures as much as you'd like. And as a former Tiger myself, I know I'm old, I get it. But I want to congratulate all of you. This is really an absolutely terrific accomplishment. So, thank you. Thank you so much. Lenny, you got to wait a second. Got to wait. Thank you. Thank you, Coach. It's always so nice to start our meetings off with something so positive. So, thank you to the Ward Three Councillors, Ward Two, forgive me, Ward Two Councillors. I should know where Newton North is. So, we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into a committee of the whole with finance providing and also ask to promote any staff who are online to participants and to invite any staff members who are going to participate. They're welcome to come inside the rail or they can speak from there. So, do I have a motion to go into committee of the whole? Still moved by Counselor Oliver, seconded, seconded by Counselor Lucas. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Counselor Gentile, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to briefly give you an idea of what we hope the plan is this evening, we have three items to take up in committee of the whole. The first, the proposed water sewer and stormwater rates. And then we'll be taking up both the five-year capital improvement plan and the supplemental capital improvement plan. I am hopeful that we will get a vote on the water sewer and stormwater rates, but I am not looking for any kind of a vote on the capital improvement items. That's merely an opportunity to hear a presentation, ask whatever questions you have, and, you know, if there's a need for additional information, it'll give the administration time to get back to us. So, that's the plan, anyway. So, the first item, let me read it into the record, is 83-25 for honor of the mayor submitting recommended fiscal year 26 water sewer and stormwater rates for implementation on July 1, 2025. And a list of proposed rates, I won't read them, are here. What I'm going to do is I'm going to turn this over to the COO, Jonathan Yeo, to start it off. And I know that he had some, we're going to have a presentation. What was the gentleman's name again? I already forgot.
Tom Fitzgerald, Director of Utilities. Shawna Sullivan is in the air right now, so Tom will provide the presentation.
Fitzgerald, that's a pretty hard name to remember, isn't it? Mr. Fitzgerald, come right up and please, it's all yours.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I will be presenting the upcoming water sewer and stormwater projects, and Chief Financial Officer Maureen Lemieux will present the proposed rates for fiscal '26. We would ask that you hold your questions until the conclusion of the presentation. Listing a few of the highlights of the This moves great. Sorry about that. This better? We will continue with an enhanced unit directional hydrant flushing program to ensure excellent water quality and verify water valve operations. Water Division is committed to ensuring that all customer service connection lines comply with the Environmental Protection Agency's revised lead and copper rule for drinking water through collaboration with property owners and systematically removing and replacing known lead services and 142 galvanized required replacement service pipes. Water meter system replacement continues to move forward. We have replaced ninety, over 93% of approximately 29,761 meters citywide and expect to complete this project by the end of the year. We have planned 2.29 miles of water main replacement, lining, and/or cleaning this year as part of the CIP. These projects ensure excellent water quality, sufficient fire flow capacity, and reduce water loss in the city's system. There's a list of the proposed streets this year. Construction in the construction of Area Nine, Wabin, Upper Falls, and Oak Hill continues. This project consists of repair, replacement, and/or relining of sewer infrastructure. Area Ten, Wabin, Newton Highlands, Newton Center, and Newton Corner is in design. Sewer Division successfully completed Phase One of the sewer pump station upgrading, including heating and ventilation upgrades at all 11 pump stations, replacement of gate valves at the Quinnipiac Quinn Road and Elliot Street pump stations, and the removal and replacement of the Oldham Pump Station. This fiscal year, we will begin the second phase of improvements, which will include architectural improvements of the Quinnipiac Quinn Pump Station, mechanical valve replacements of the Elliot Pump Station, and pump replacements at the Manette Road and Edgewater Pump Stations. The city is preparing to submit an alternative schedule request to extend the deadline to meet Environmental Protection Agency's phosphorus reduction requirements. Stormwater Division is currently identifying potential phosphorus control projects for design this year. Continue to final, continue to final design of the Bullows Pond Dam rehabilitation and apply for necessary permits. Updating Stormwater Infrastructure Improvement Plan to reprioritize and develop plans to help alleviate localized flooding as a result, as a result of increased heavy rainfall. The plan will include culvert repairs and prioritized plan for dredging streams and culverts. There's a new line in the, in the stormwater budget that will increase the number of storm and culvert cleanings. The Division will continue to enhance the catch basin and cleaning program to continue annual cleaning and inspection of all city catch basins while developing a database to catalog material quantities to determine a data-driven schedule for each catch basin clinics. Division will also contract for a hydrologic analysis of the Cheesecake Brook, which includes a flood risk analysis. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to CFO Maureen Lemieux.
Thank you, Tom, and good evening, everyone. As you know, more than a decade ago, we put together under, it was actually under Mayor Warren's administration, we put together a very aggressive capital improvement plan for our water and sewer infrastructures. We certainly, at that time, were still looking at stormwater and making stormwater improvements, but our aggressive CIP, if you will, was really in our water and sewer areas. At that time, so again, more than a decade ago, we made a commitment that we would not raise our water sewer, stormwater combined rates by more than 3.9%. I am happy to be able to tell you that for more than a decade, we have been able to hold that promise. We're here again this year with a 3.9% increase. Now, if any of you did the math on either the water rates, the sewer rates, or the stormwater rates, you will see that none of these three increases are actually at 3.9%. And so, 3.9% overall does not necessarily mean 3.9% for each. Our Water Enterprise Fund totals about $29.4 million, makes up 41% of the total that we spend on water sewer and stormwater. Our Sewer Enterprise Fund makes up 50% and totals about $35.7 million, and our Stormwater Fund with these rates will now be over 8%, inching its way towards 9% of the total funds that we spend on water sewer and stormwater. You may all recall back when we did the budget presentation, we talked to you about the tremendous requirements that are facing us in the stormwater arena, namely with phosphorus control for the Charles River. We are working on trying to have an alternate funding plan and alternate plan of implementation approved through EPA. We have not gotten there yet, and so the rates, though, that we are proposing here tonight, we're holding at the 3.9%. I don't know what the future will bring and whether or not this is the last year we will be able to do it. We will certainly be working with all of you significantly in the near future on stormwater, but at least for this year, I'm pleased to say that we're able to hold our 3.9% structure with stormwater receiving a 6.1% increase. So, continuing to raise the stormwater revenues that we receive by more than what we are increasing the other two funds, but yet staying within our total of 3.9%. So, thank you.
Hey, I also wanted to mention that after council members have had a chance to ask questions on each of the three items, we will have, we will open up a public hearing. So, at this point, are there any questions for Mr. Fitzgerald or for our CFO regarding their two presentations? Counsel Danberg.
Thank you for Mr. Fitzgerald. First of all, congratulations to the entire DPW and everyone that has worked on this for holding the total rate to three and a half, three, 3.9%. That's, that's a great accomplishment. What is the, can you tell me what the percentage of water loss is now from the city? We, I know, have improved it by a lot over the past 10 years, and the goal, I believe from, I remember from last year, was that the goal is around 90%. We can never get to 100 because we have all kinds of things that we do. We flush out hydrants and things like that. But what approximately is the percentage of water loss?
We're in the low 20s.
That's very good compared to what we were.
It could be better. We're working our way towards a lower number.
Good, good. And do you have any idea when we would get to that 90%? 90% capture?
That's a goal always, but one of the big things is the meter program, which we're just about completed with, as that data comes in, because we're reporting on the previous year. So, that will help us. That's a tool also, once that's completed, will allow us to monitor the water traveling through the system. So, there'll be some checks and balances that we can use to actually chase down leaks, find out, find out where the water is actually going. So, more to come in the future.
Thank you. And the only other question that I have is, do you know the number or the percentage of catch basins that we got to this year? I think I remember the number, the total number as being something like 26,000, but correct me if I'm wrong.
There's roughly 22,000.
Twenty-two.
And we're close to that number.
Good.
Closing on doing that annually.
Good. Thank you very much.
Counsel Albright, and then Counsel Oliver.
Thank you for your, thank you for your presentation. When we started this whole project, I guess, as you said, it was well over a decade ago. We said it would be a 20-year plan, as I recall. Are we still hoping for a 20-year plan, or is it going to take longer to get the whole system fixed?
Which plan are you referring to?
Water.
Water. I believe, I wasn't here when that started. I've been in my position for a little over three years. I think that was a starting point to get the system, get to some deferred maintenance that hadn't happened in the past. I think it's going to be an ongoing project, process, certainly heading in the right direction. I don't think, when you operate a utility system as old as the city, you're never done. There's always things to do.
Yeah, I get that, but when will we have touched everything that needed to be touched? Is it going to be longer than 20 years?
I'd say in terms of the water pipeline network, we probably have at least another decade, 15 years to go. The Wabin Hill Covered Storage Reservoir needs work as well. That's really the heart of our storage system, and there's a large project needed up there. There is some other parts of the water system that need work. So, if you look in the CIP, there's, there's still quite a bit of work to be done on the water system. As, as the director said, it is an old system. We've making progress on the unaccounted for water, for sure. We still have a ways to go on that front, and the metering program is certainly helpful, but we have, we have a ways to go on upgrading our, and improving our water system.
So, maybe we're getting close to halfway there?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take that. Thank you.
That's all of it.
Great, thank you, Chair. I guess this question might be for CFO, I'm guessing. When it comes to the, once we have the EPA plan or their, you know, a revised plan, will the phosphor charge end up being something similar to what we see here for stormwater in terms of per household, or might it be more per, you know, assessed by usage? I'm just curious. Or do we know yet?
I will jump in first, and then Jonathan Yeo may want to jump in as well. We haven't really talked about how we would bill it out as being something separate. Right now, we have for all of the residences throughout the city, we have a fixed fee that everyone pays, and that amount will be $148.54 next year for the total for the year for stormwater work. And then our commercial properties pay based on impervious area. Several years ago, we didn't have the technology that would have been required at that point in time, not to us, not for us to have done this with any certainty, but we certainly talked about whether or not we ought to implement impervious, impervious area charges for all of the residents throughout the city as well. We have not revisited that conversation in the last several years, but I would think as we move forward and as we understand whatever the costs are that are facing us with the phosphorus control issue, I think we will probably also want to revisit how we actually bill out stormwater fees. It won't be based on usage. The only thing that is measured and metered in the city is the actual water that each property draws from the system. We assume if you're pulling water in, you are sending wastewater out, and so that's what, so we base sewer rates on, or sewer costs on water usage. We do not do that with stormwater. So, I would expect that we will certainly be revisiting that whole conversation, just to make sure that as we're increasing our stormwater fees and our stormwater expenditures, that we are happy with however it is that we are parsing out those costs.
Maureen, just adding on to that, I think we've certainly talked about using the impervious surface as a charge point for stormwater. Getting access to the good data that we can defend is really the key. So, you know, this phosphorus program is just one part of our federal compliance effort, and that is only one part of our stormwater program, because we still have our whole infrastructure culverts and everything else to take care of, as well as dealing with flooding issues and whatnot. So, how we charge for that is, you know, to be debated and discussed going forward.
I'll look forward to that conversation. But I guess maybe then as a quick follow-up, because of the magnitude, perhaps, of some of the numbers that I've seen, I know we're relooking or asking the EPA to relook at some of their numbers, but it does seem to me that the numbers might be large enough where we might want to break them out so that people see them at least once a year or in some fashion. Anyway, I guess that's not really a question, but more of a thought, a comment. But thank you, Chair. That's all I had.
President Laredo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I appreciate the administration's desire to commit to a 3.9% global increase. If you were to raise that to, say, 4.5%, and you were to put that extra money to the water and sewer lines, how much quicker could we get the work done that needs to be done?
Well, Maureen, going to 4.5, or I won't quote you on that, Counselor, but you could, you could ramp things up, you know, by 20, 20%, and you could move faster, for sure. I mean, you'd be able to, there's only so much work you can do on a water system in a given year, just in terms of disruption and managing construction, but, I mean, if you saw the list of streets that were going to be done this coming year, you could add another several streets on to that list.
I guess I want to, I don't want to commit you to an exact number. That's not fair, but I do think it's important for us all to understand that, as Counselor Albright said, this was a 20-year plan. Obviously, 20 years is a rough number.
Right.
It's not going to be done in 20 years. We have the capacity, if we have the funds, to do it quicker, and we're making a decision on that for a number of reasons. I just want to make sure I understand that correctly.
That's right, and we have tried to keep steady level funding for water and sewer work. The challenge is that the costs have gone up too. So...
Mr. Fitzgerald, do we get a return on investment for that work?
Yes, we do, especially in the, actually, on both water and sewer. We help with aging infrastructure on the water side that has a potential to leak, also on the sewer side, where we're competing against all the member communities of MWR. So, we, we pay a piece, it's a piece of a pie, it's a whole budget. We're billed based on our flow share. So, if a large community, say Boston, does some INI projects, and they reduce their flow share, that gets spread out on the rest of the communities, and we're a fairly large community compared to them, so our price, our rate will increase. So, it's a battle, we want to continue the fight to keep our flow share down. We don't want to be sending groundwater to MWR and be in charge for that.
So, again, I appreciate the trade-offs strikes me that there would be some benefit and return on investment to putting some more money into the system now, which actually might help rates. to putting some more money into the system now, which actually might help rates on a going-forward basis. One other question, Mr. Chair, if I could. We've had discussions for many years about the water meters. I know Public Facilities has had multiple discussions on that. I want to just be clear that it's still the department's view that the water meters charges, the extra charges some people are bearing is essentially neutral because so many other people are getting rebates. Is that a fair statement?
Everyone's being billed for the water that they consumed, that went through their meter. Unfortunately, for a period of time, the meters weren't reading. Usage changes. So the meter, when the new meter gets put in, there's a catch-up bill. So that's what I think a lot of the discussion's about. On the same hand, if you're getting an estimated bill for a period of time and your usage went down, you're eligible for a credit. So we're only billing on what we, what was actually sent.
But is that, is that net neutral? Or did we in fact overall underbill for a number of years?
That's still to be determined, but my gut feeling is we underbilled.
Your gut feeling, so, so that was a determination that was made previously, but you don't think that was an accurate one, that in fact we were underbilling?
No, I believe we were because we weren't, the meters weren't capturing the flow.
So I'm at a little bit of a loss. If we were, we have to, the water and sewer charges are fixed by the MWRA, correct?
Correct.
So it should have been even. You're saying some people got underbilled more than people got overbilled?
If, Mr. Chair, if, if I could jump in.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Laredo, the water bills are not fixed. What is fixed, what is fixed each year is the assessment that, the amount that we are assessed by MWRA. But those, the water and sewer assessments are only a part of what we do. All of the debt that we incur is separate and apart from that. All of our water and sewer employees are separate and apart from that. We, each year, our water assessment is based on, I'm not sure which, if they're one or two years in arrears, but it's based on what we actually use for water. The sewer is a big calculation that's partially based on population, partially based on how much water we consume and what our flow is going back to them. So we are in the business, if you will, of selling water and covering our sewer costs, but it's, it's not fixed at all. And so in any given year, we could, if it's a dry year, we make much more money selling water. If it's a wet year, we don't. And so it's almost like we're in, in business, if you will, selling water. So those, our revenues could go up, they could go down. And that's why managing our reserves.
Ms. LeMieux, that really wasn't my question, forgive me.
I just jump in, I understand the question. It was, it was never going to be net neutral.
Okay, just sewer clear.
The reason is because what, what Maureen said, there were no set costs. It's based on usage. So it was never, it was never going to be net neutral and it hasn't been.
So for many years, we are taking in less money than we should have. Is that the statement?
I, I, I think we believe that that is probably true more so in the last year or two or three, not necessarily for the past 10 years.
I respectfully think we need to be communicating that more accurately to our residents. And what we're really saying is we're making up a shortfall in what we should have collected now that we have new meters in place. Is that, is that accurate?
It's accurate for each individual homeowner. So it's not, not, we're not looking to make up a shortfall in total. It's only if any particular homeowner paid less than they should have because we didn't realize how much water they were using.
I'll just try to ask it because I think the Chair summarized it, I think, accurately. As a city, collectively, we did not take in, according to the administration, all the money that we should have. There was a shortfall and therefore we are now billing people to collect that shortfall. Is that accurate?
I think in some cases, yes.
Well, Ms. LeMieux, I'm sorry to try to push it. I'm not asking individually, I'm asking citywide. Did we have a shortfall and are we now trying to collect on that shortfall?
Well, we haven't had a shortfall at all. We have collected less revenue, I think, than we otherwise might have. We, we were not in deficit at all.
No.
If that's the question.
The one Counselor, the one area that we were not collecting on, where we should have been collecting on, were some irrigation meters that had been put in, but were never registered with the city. So there were cases where people were using city water. They didn't have a well. They were using city water for irrigation systems and were not being billed for several years. They're now catching, we've now caught up with them. They have to pay for the water they use. That's the only area where, you know, somebody was using water and we weren't collecting as a city for a period of time. But, you know, that's a, that's a little subset. Other than that, the, the estimated billing, you had winners, you had winners and losers depending on how the estimates were.
So if I, if I looked at the bills for the city, collectively across everything, took out the irrigation water that was not billed, your statement is it would be absolutely equal?
Right, I think you have those that get credits and then those, and the ones, you don't hear from those.
The administration of documentation to back that up?
Of documentation to back that up. I don't think we're done with fixing all the meters yet or changing out all the meters. So maybe when the program is completed.
Well, could you, could you share with us where you are now since we're mostly?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't have that.
Could you look into that for us, please? Thank you. Thank you, all set, Mr. Chair?
Okay, Counsel Grossman.
Two small questions. Mr. Fitzgerald, on the screen, you had put up a list of big water projects and particular streets that were on the list for this year. I didn't see Ward Street on there, but I'm under the impression that we're continuing there. Could you just update me on where we're at with Ward Street?
That, that is an oversight on my part.
Okay. And can you?
That is a very large project. We're in, the first phase is complete. Second phase is bid on to bid. It's a project we're doing in conjunction with MWRA. They're replacing their line at the same time ours. So they're going to put their line in first. We'll then use their line to transfer water through our existing line to feed the reservoir and our line will go in. So that's, it's a multi-year project.
Do you know, so, well, that second stretch or that second phase of Ward Street, which I'm assuming goes over to center?
Yes, to Center Street.
And is that, are we going to have that phase completed this construction season and then paved over? Do we not know?
Probably won't begin until next construction season.
Oh, really?
The MWRA needs to install their line first.
This construction season?
This construction season.
Okay, so you think that road, I'm just trying to anticipate. So that road is going to be torn up?
A few years, unfortunately.
Okay. I'll have to check in with you about the date of my son's bar mitzvah and you can let me know what to expect. My second question is, I've been thinking more and reading more about plastic and water. And I really didn't think a ton about what material we use in these projects until I was replacing some of the water lines in my own house and they were replaced with plastic pipes. So essentially, when we replace these lines, they're plastic. Is that right?
All the city mains, we're using ductile iron.
Or what?
We're using cement lined ductile iron pipe.
Iron?
Iron, no plastic.
Not plastic?
No.
No plastic services, all our services are copper.
Okay.
Some of the older ones are galvanized steel, but there's no plastic in our system.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Counsel Albright, did you want to be recognized again? Go ahead.
So just following up on President Laredo's, there's something that doesn't make sense in my head. And that is that the MWRA measures how much water we, we use as a city. And they bill us for that.
Yep.
And then we have found that over, as we replace these water meters, that we, there are families of tens of thousands of dollars, $20,000, $100,000, $200,000 of under, underbilling to our residents. I don't understand, and probably this isn't the right night to try to understand, but it isn't, it's a constant question that I have in my head. Who, who made up the difference for these hundreds of thousands of dollars that we didn't charge? How, how could we possibly have come out even with the board if the city didn't kick in some more money?
Well, I can discuss this offline at some point with you, but the MWRA issue and the payments is separate from whatever is happening at the retail level with, with billing.
Don't we have, don't we charge our ratepayers based on the bill we get?
Only, only half of what we're billing at the retail level for water, not, not sewer, sewer's a different case, but for water is, comes from the MWRA. Tom's Cruise and the debt that we're paying on those water lines and all those other things are our own charges to run our own water system. So, you know, it's, the MWRA is one, a big part of, of our expenses every single year for water. But in terms of, you know, what we're collecting at the meter, we, we have years where we have, we have droughts, where, you know, people are, lots of people are watering their lawns. We have lots of revenue coming in. We have wet years where we have low revenue coming in. It goes up and down. You know, the meters, clearly, we had a small number of, you know, irrigation meters where we weren't collecting. We're now collecting that. And so, you know, Maureen, I don't know, the size of, we have a, we have a water fund that has how many millions of dollars in it? That, that?
I haven't looked lately, probably 10.
Yeah, so whatever we're not collecting is tiny compared to what's in the fund. So the fund is a, is a bigger reservoir, essentially using a water term, is a bigger reservoir to balance out the year-to-year ins and outs of droughts and floods and, and, and water use, so.
So do you take money out of the water, sewer, water fund to pay a bill?
We pay, yes, well.
I know we pay for our staff that way.
Yeah, we pay for the debt on the water projects as well as, you know, as the MWRA. So I don't know, Maureen, if you want to explain the ins and outs of the water fund, but it's much bigger than what's going on.
It would be great to understand it if you could write us something that really helps us understand it, probably not tonight, but another night. We'd love to understand it better.
Are you all set? Any other questions? All right, let me take this opportunity then to open the item up for a public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on the proposed water and sewer rates? Seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing? Motion to close the public hearing. Okay, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye. Opposed, abstentions? All right, the public hearing is closed. Could I get a motion to approve the proposed rates? Motion made by Counsel Oliver, seconded by Counsel Farrell. Any further discussion? Okay, I believe we can do this on a voice vote. Want to do roll call? Getting pretty bossy in your new position. Okay, so we'll have, take a roll call on the item.
Counsel Albrecht?
Aye.
Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Bixby?
Aye.
Counsel Block?
Aye.
Counsel Danberg?
Aye.
Counsel Downs?
Recused except on the stormwater fee on which I vote aye.
Counsel Farrell?
Aye.
Counsel Gentile?
Aye.
Counsel Getz?
Aye.
Counsel Greenberg?
Aye.
Counsel Grossman?
Aye.
Counsel Humphrey?
Aye.
Counsel Kalas?
Counsel Kelly?
Aye.
Counsel Kritzman?
Aye.
Counsel Leary?
Aye.
Counsel Lipoff?
Aye.
Counsel Labovitz?
Aye.
Counsel Lucas?
Aye.
Counsel Malachi?
Aye.
Counsel Mickley?
Aye.
Counsel Oliver?
Aye.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
And President Laredo?
Aye.
The motion passes 22 to 0. One recused, one absent. And the stormwater fee passes 23 to 0 with one absent.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving along, docket item 351-24, Heron of the Mayor submitting the fiscal years 2026 to 2030 capital improvement plan pursuant to section 5-3 of the Newton City Charter. Chief Operating Officer Yo, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, I'm going to go just quickly over the supplemental capital improvement plan that we submitted on April 22. That's this thinner document here. And in addition, I'll be referencing, and then you'll eventually be voting on the full capital improvement plan, which is the much larger document submitted in October that I made a long presentation at that time.
All right, well, then let me read both, the second one into the, into the record, please. So we're going to discuss both at the same time. So the second item is 82-25, Heron of the Mayor submitting the FY 26 to 30 supplemental capital improvement plan. And again, this is for information purposes only. I'm not going to be asking you to vote on anything tonight on either of these items.
Okay, thank you. Again, in October, submitted and gave a presentation on the full capital improvement plan, which includes all of the backup information, different sections and details. And that is really where we, we prioritize. And over the summer, and then leading into October, we prioritize all the capital projects from ground up as a team and then present those in October. The supplemental capital improvement plan really is just an update at this time of year to go over any changes. Let me just quickly show here a summary of the main CIP from October. 619 projects, total investment of about $1.48 billion, over $400 million in ongoing projects. In October, we added 290 new projects to the CIP. This was really the result of Commissioner Josh Morse's detailed evaluation of municipal facilities to identify all the issues that need to be dealt with in the future decades. He had done similar program for the school system the year before. Changes, from the fall to the spring, we deleted seven projects from, from the CIP. We did not add any new projects this year. Between these two documents, we did not have any significant changes in project rankings. So we're now at about 612 total projects. And we did list some of the projects where we might be coming to the council this fiscal year, remainder of this fiscal year for approvals. Those are mostly just some water and sewer projects. As I mentioned, the fall CIP is where we do all of our real ranking. As I mentioned, the fall CIP is where we do all of our real ranking and analysis. As I've mentioned, each year, the CIP funding sources come from lots of different things. Northland's in the back of the room. We have development mitigation funds, for sure, help pay for projects, including our wonderful Splash Park pad that is under construction right now in Upper Falls. We have city bonding, we have grants, federal funds, which, I don't know, that will be coming forward for years to come. But we have CPA funds, sometimes we come with free cash, water and sewer, stormwater funds as well, so. And some overrides, Franklin and Countryside Schools, for example. Right now, I mentioned this, in the fall, the big five projects are under construction, and Lincoln Elliott being the one, and Cooper Center that will be done this fall, fall or winter. And we're extremely excited about both of those projects. Lincoln Elliott, these are just some pictures that Commissioner Morse, some of you probably follow his photos online and his videos, but the school is very far along and should really actually be ready in June or July, and for the Lincoln Elliott community to move everything over, one block down the street, to this wonderful new building. And then Horace Mann will then quickly move over to one ninety-one Pearl Street, the old Lincoln Elliott, for a year while their school is being redone. And also, we have started construction on Countryside and Horace Mann, and two different pictures here of construction just beginning at both of those locations. The Cooper Center, very excited, this is moving quite along. If you've been down Walnut Street, you'll see the brick going up on the sides of the building, and the inside, there's the walking track in the gym on the lower right. And this project is moving along, looking for a, I think it's a November-ish opening. Road paving is just another big thing that's going on in terms of capital work on major streets. Everything from Beacon and Homer, Winchester, Auburn, Church Street, over ten million dollars worth of work on major roads. And then, we have a hundred and thirty-one smaller roads, can't read them there, but the map shows where all of these locations are that we'll be working on. And you've probably heard Commissioner Sullivan discuss these, over fourteen miles to be paved in this construction year. These are all residential roads with low PCIs. As Tom mentioned, our water meter replacement program is ninety-four percent complete. We're down to under two thousand meters to go. And the online dashboard is up and running, as I think I advertised last fall to use the dashboard. I found out, I got an email, two emails from DPW last week, and found out that somebody had left a hose on in my backyard. And I was notified that there was extra water being used from my home, which obviously I'm paying for, but the dashboard does work. I will tell people, if you're worried about your water use, sign up for it, set some triggers. Athletic fields, also under construction. Here is Alomaral, this is well underway. And also, some of the digging you'll see right along Craft Street is the new stormwater basin that we're putting in. And this will grab a bunch of phosphorus that is running off of Craft Street and other local roads that would have gone directly into the Brook and into the Charles River. We'll be getting some really good credit for this. Louise and team have been working closely with Charles River Watershed Association on this project. And we're looking forward to putting in the second synthetic turf field this fall. And Newton North and our athletic leagues are excited to be, begin using that with new field lights. Also, over at the Burr School, those of you who haven't been over there to see it, yeah, my pointer's working, this is the entire site. This is Lexington Street. New pathways are being created around the perimeter of the site. Here's the Burr School down here and the basketball court. And here's some of the pathways that are going in on site. So, this, the pathways will be done this summer, the fields will be ready next spring or summer. And then, last project just to mention, many of you driven down Washington Street, seeing the progress on the Spears Park Community Garden under construction. And Counselor Greenberg, when are we opening this? Memorial Day? Okay. All right, we will all come see you there when this opens, so very exciting. And that's really it, I just wanted to show you a quick, brief summary of some of the major projects that are under work right now. And if you have any questions on the CIP, either the main one or the supplemental, please let me know. And then, if I can't answer them right now, I will take down the questions and get back to you on them.
Thank you. Questions on either item, the supplemental or the regular five-year capital improvement plan? Counsel Greenberg.
Thank you. So, of all the projects listed in the CIP, are they all in some phase of planning, either design or construction? Or are there, it would be helpful if there was a column that said under construction or in design phase, just so we would know.
That's a great question. For the most part, if you look at the six hundred and twelve projects, I'd say only a hundred, a hundred of them are, have any work going on. The rest of them are just things that Commissioner Morse or others have identified as eventual needs, things that eventually need to happen. We don't need to fix the roof right now at Newton North, but that project is listed in the CIP because we know that in, say, ten years, I don't know, how old is Newton North now? It's now, yeah. So, in ten years, we'll probably need to start replacing parts of the roof. So, right now, we're not working on that, but, and there's hundreds of other projects like that. We know eventually we're going to need to do. When you look at the CIP, you might see in some of the years, there's dollars. And that's where, those are projects that are further along, where we know we're either in early stages of feasibility or planning or begun design work on. So, those are the ones where you see the dollars in the, and those are higher priority, probably the top hundred and fifty or so. Those are ones that are closer to reality and to highest priority, and we know we're going to need to deal with, say, in the next five years.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counsel Bixby.
Along those lines, I mean, I see the dollar amounts, but are there, sort of, it seems like some of that is also where we know that funds are coming from for grants or otherwise. Sorry, it's awkward to turn around and look at you. The, are there sort of other high priority items that might have dollars that we know we could get associated with them that you anticipate could come up in the next fiscal year?
If, like water, sewer, stormwater, we've planned out those projects based on availability of funds. Obviously, if we upped our three point nine to something higher, we could go a little faster. In terms of develop, like development mitigation, that is really what the council deems appropriate for each project and what kind of monies come to the city to work on various projects. In the case of Northland, they built the splash pad, or they're building the splash pad themselves. Other funding sources, you know, come forward through grants, you know, state grants, and we'll pursue them, their priority projects, or things that we know that the state is interested in funding, and they have specific grant programs for. You know, like the Newton Highlands Project is a good example. Right now, we don't have the ability to fund the construction of that ourselves as a city, given where we are in terms of our overall budget and Prop two and a half. But our hope is, in the future, to obtain substantial state grant funding for that project to help match whatever we can put forward. So, it's, you know, it depends sometimes on what comes through with the state. We have a whole bunch of people, we have a whole team of people who are working on identifying grant opportunities and moving those forward and giving it our best shot.
All set? Anyone else? All right, let me open up the public hearing on three fifty-one dash twenty-four. This is the mayor submitting the two thousand twenty-six to two thousand thirty capital improvement plan. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Motion to close by Counsel Lobovitz, seconded by Counsel Danberg. All those in favor of holding the item, please say aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Yes. Did I hear someone? Pardon? Okay. Abstentions? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Can I get a motion to, I did ask for a motion to hold, right? All right, so we're set on that. Next item, let me open the public hearing on eighty-two dash twenty-five, the supplemental capital improvement plan. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Motion to close, seconded by Counsel Oliver. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions? All right, motion passes unanimously. Can I get a motion to hold this item? Motion made by Counsel Oliver, seconded by Counselor Lobovitz. All those in favor of holding eighty-two dash twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, work on the committee of the hall. I believe Mr. President has done it this point. Can I get a motion to go out of committee of the hall and back into our regular session? So moved by Counsel Kelly, seconded by Counsel Mickley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. President, it's all yours.
Thank you to Chair Gentile for running, as usual, a very good presentation. Thank you to our staff for helping out here, giving us information and guidance, leading to our votes. So, we are now going to proceed to first call. We're going to take a vote on first call, and then we are going to go to the one item that remains on second call. So, we are going to start with Counsel Kelly for the land use committee. Before you do, I want to make sure that we identify that Counsel Downs, Counsel Lipoff are also online this evening. Go ahead, please, Chair Kelly. I already identified Counsel Wright.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you said, the one item that we took up in land use on April twenty-second is on second call chartered, so we'll get to that later, but I would like to request some public hearings, please.
Go ahead, please, Chair Kelly.
On page ninety-nine of your book, I would like to request public hearings for May twentieth for items one forty-two dash twenty-five, which is at sixty-five Clark Street, number, docket item one forty-three dash twenty-five at fifty-six Chapel Street, one forty-four dash twenty-five at twelve-ten Washington Street, and finally, one forty-five dash twenty-five at two-seventy Derby Street. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Chair Kelly. Next, for zoning and planning committee, Chair Baker.
Mr. Chairman, I think the vice chair is going to give the report.
Vice Chair Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. The report begins on page ninety-four, excuse me. The zoning and planning commission committee, yeah, great start. Met on April twenty-ninth, no, second, sorry, twenty-second, over two. Twenty-nine, yeah, I'll just hit reset, right? We have three items here. Item one twenty-nine twenty-five, request for authorization to submit the FY twenty-six to thirty consolidated plan, two thousand twenty-five revised citizen participation plan, and the FY twenty-six annual action plan. That item was approved eight to zero. We have item sixty-six twenty-five, appointment of Michael Alperin to the Newton Affordable Housing Trust, which was also approved eight to zero. Item seventy-three twenty-five, appointment of J.J. Kazakov-Aigen to the Burdo Advisory Commission. That item was also approved eight to zero. And with that, I conclude the report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Oliver. Next, for the Programs and Services Committee, Counsel Krenzman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the vice chair will be giving their report tonight.
Vice Chair Humphrey, go ahead, please.
Hello. Turning to page ninety-five in the report, Programs and Services Committee met on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. The non-budgetary items that we voted out were a batch of four reappointments. Eighty-nine twenty-five, reappointment of Nathan Persantieri to the Commission on Disability, approved five to zero. Ninety twenty-five, reappointment of Stephen Logowitz to the Community Education Commission, approved five to zero. Ninety-one twenty-five, reappointment of Harold W. Adams to the Community Education Commission, approved six to zero. Ninety-two twenty-five, reappointment of William Dietrich to the Bio Safety Committee, approved six to zero. And with that, that concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Humphrey. Chair Grossman for Public Safety and Transportation, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's no report this evening. We did have our budget meeting with the Police and Fire Department last week, and we have our regularly scheduled meeting in two nights.
Great, thank you very much. Chair Albright for Public Facilities.
Thank you, Mr. President. And page, the report starts on page ninety-five. We met on April twenty-third, and we approved, some, a number of items were held, but we had some reappointments. On ninety-three twenty-five, we reappointed Howard Goldberg to the Designer Selection Committee for a term to office to expire on two thousand twenty-five. Ninety-four dash twenty-five, reappointment of Amy McCrell to also the Designer Selection Committee for the term of office to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Ninety-five twenty-five, reappointing Carol Shine to the Design Review Committee for a term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. All these dates seem a little odd to me, I'm not sure that they're correct, but we can fix that if it's wrong. Ninety-six twenty-five is the reappointing Peter Baer to the Design Review Committee for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. And these were all approved eight zero. The committee met again on April thirtieth. We approved two CPC items, but they have not yet been heard by the Finance Committee, so I won't report them out tonight. And all the other items were held. I just want to say that the Bullows Pond Dam docket item is planned to be held on May twenty-ninth. And we know a couple of members can't be there, so if you can or cannot be there, would you please let the clerk know, clerk panel know? This is the Public Facilities Committee, so we can see if we have a quorum for May twenty-ninth or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Albright. Next up, Chair Gentile for Finance, please.
The finance report can be found on page ninety-seven. Docket item one oh seven dash twenty-five, her honor the mayor requesting authorization to appropriate two million dollars from June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four certified free cash to an account that is established for the purpose of supplementing the significant increase in the FY two thousand twenty-six health insurance cost. This item was approved by a vote of seven to zero. And I would also like to request a suspension of the rules to report out docket item eighty-three dash twenty-five, which was an item taken up earlier this evening for which there is no written report.
All in favor of granting the request for suspension of rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have it. Go ahead, please, Council Gentile.
Thank you, Mr. President. Eighty-three dash twenty-five is Your Honor, the mayor submitting recommended fiscal year two thousand twenty-six water sewer stormwater rates for implementation on July one, twenty-twenty-five. There was a meeting earlier this evening. Mr. Fitzgerald from the Public Works Department, along with Maureen Lemieux, both gave us presentations on water sewer and stormwater. The highlight from CFO Lemieux being the fact that the city recommendation stays within the longstanding policy of keeping the three items at a max of three-point-nine percent increase, which is the case for this upcoming year. There were a few questions asked and answered. There was a public hearing that was opened. No member of the public commented on the proposed rates, and at that point, we took a vote, and the council voted twenty-two to zero with one absent and one recused for water and sewer rates, and twenty-three in favor, and one absent for the stormwater rates. And with that, I would move the report.
Thank you, Chair Gentile. Chair Danberg for Real Property Reuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's no report tonight.
Thank you, Chair Danberg. With that, Ms. Flynn, would you call the roll, please?
Council Albright?
Aye.
Council Baker?
Aye.
Council Bigsby?
Aye.
Council Block?
Aye.
Council Danberg?
Aye.
Council Downs?
Aye.
Council Farrell?
Aye.
Council Gentile? Council Getz?
Aye.
Council Greenberg?
Aye.
Council Grossman?
Aye.
Council Humphrey?
Aye.
Council Kalas? Council Kelly?
Aye.
Council Krensmann?
Aye.
Council Leary?
Aye.
Council Lipoff?
Aye.
Council Lobovitz?
Aye.
Council Lucas?
Aye.
Council Malakim?
Aye.
Council Mickley?
Aye.
Council Oliver?
Aye.
Council Wright?
Aye.
President Laredo?
Aye.
The motion passes twenty-three to zero with one absent.
Thank you. We are moving on to second call. There is one item on second call. This is seven dash twenty-five, which is the special request to amend the special permit at fifty-five Tower Road. Council Block, you chartered the item last time, so I'm going to recognize you first, and then we'll take it up with anyone else who wishes to speak, and then I expect we're going to vote the item this evening. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've been advised by the Law Department, but the only item before us is the changes from Northland's approved special permit to the proposed new plan. So what are these changes? Northland proposes to eliminate buildings nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and fourteen, reduce the size of buildings five and eight, and change the use of building one from commercial to residential. Thus, eight out of fourteen buildings, or fifty-seven percent, are eliminated or significantly modified. Out of thirteen-hundred-and-fifty approved parking stalls, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven underground stalls are being removed, and one-hundred-and-twenty-four surface stalls are being added. Thus, five-hundred-and-eleven, or thirty-eight percent, of the parking stalls are being removed or their location altered. I hope we can agree that these amount to substantial modifications of the approved plan. Is it possible to make the required determinations by only considering these changes, or is it more logical to make the determinations by considering the plan in its entirety? Although these changes come to us in the form of an amendment to the approved special permit, in my opinion, they add up to a completely new plan. I personally believe this is the only way we can fulfill our quasi-judicial role. A development of this size is bound to have major impact on traffic. Let's take a look at the traffic presented by VHB on the Needham and Oak Street intersection, the intersection most heavily impacted by Northland's plan. The displayed slide somewhere up there, and everyone should have this on their desk. The displayed side is from table fourteen on page fifty-three of VHB's report. The bottom portion of the chart pertains to the weekday evening peak time. The total line indicates that the current condition is a D level of service. The far-right column shows that the proposed plan will result in an F level of service. If we use the average total delay metric as an indicator of how much worse Needham Street will get, the current rating is forty-five, the projected rating is one hundred. In short, VHB's data is telling us that traffic on Needham Street will be twice as bad than it is currently. I don't go to Needham Street very often, but last Saturday at noon, I happened to be on Needham Street traveling north from the Needham and Oak intersection. The oncoming traffic was breathtaking. With only a few minor breaks, the queue heading south was backed up all the way to the Winchester-Dedham Street intersection. If we approve Northland's new plan, I believe that traffic on Needham Street at the peak weekday evening time will become a slow-moving parking lot. This could risk the viability of many of the businesses on Needham Street. This kind of traffic jam will, in my opinion, have a significant negative impact on the neighborhood. It is-
Council Block, you're out of time. How much more?
How about two minutes?
Request for additional, two minutes for Council Block. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Go ahead, please, Council Block.
It is true that one can argue that the level of service of the new plan is better than the old one. The approved plan has a metric, has a delay metric of one-oh-five, while the new plan is a hundred. However, both are still an F level of service, and both are, in my opinion, unacceptable. The next slide that's going to be displayed up there and that you have on your desk is a queue diagram showing how far queues go at the fiftieth percentile and ninety-fifth percentile at the Needham and Oak intersection. You can find this on page three fifty-three of the VHB report appendix. These maps are important because they show if side streets and curb cuts are blocked by the queues. Unfortunately, these queue diagrams don't show where vehicles will enter and exit the site based on the new site plan. Even better maps, however, will get you only so far. What is really needed for a project of this complexity is a video simulation of how traffic will flow on Needham Street and how vehicles will enter and exit the development. Either the Planning Department or the Land Use Committee could have required Northland to undertake such an analysis. Unfortunately, that did not happen. Let me close by saying that we cannot overrule the city council that approved Northland's plan in twenty-nineteen. But we can say to Northland, this plan that you are presenting to us will place an intolerable burden on Needham Street and will therefore have a substantial negative impact on the neighborhood. For that reason, I will be voting no on this item. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Block. Anyone else wish to be heard on the item? Council Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. I spoke quite a bit last time, and gave you all a thorough history of this, and I'm going to ask my council members to support the unanimous decision of the Land Use Committee to vote in favor of this. It was an extremely thorough, thoughtful, and convincing process. We met many times. It was convincing, unanimous, input by all the councilors present, including my many councilors not on the committee. I feel that though a totally appropriate legal move to charter is really an effort to push a minority opinion that was not supported in the committee, and honestly, it's a little bit of a sour grapes approach when one's opinion isn't supported by other people, and all of us have to deal with that every now and then when our ideas just don't prevail, and we need to move on and go with a majority vote. So I hope you will all support the land use decision. Thank you.
Council Kelly, Council Downs is online, please.
Thank you, President. I'm speaking in part as a counselor from the ward, and I won't repeat a lot of the reports that Chair Kelly made last week or this week, but I will address the issue of First of all, as members of the Land Use Committee, as a semi-judicial body, we cannot ask a developer to address a currently existing already bad condition, and yet we have, and Northland has, in a number of ways. You know, yes, they will be developing there, and the current proposal will actually improve their traffic numbers because they will be eliminating office, which was the bulk of their traffic numbers in the two thousand and nineteen permit. If the two thousand and nineteen buildings were built, we would actually be getting more traffic than the current proposal. On top of which, in council's wisdom in two thousand and nineteen, we limited the number of cars that residents would be bringing to one per unit, and those are unbundled from the apartments, which means that you get a discount if you don't bring a car. You're only paying for the apartment if that's all you need. You weren't forced to also pay for parking. That parking is centralized and in a structure which makes it even less attractive, and as we've found with both Austin Street and Trio, that parking may be used, but it generates very little traffic. On top of which, we will be moving more people closer into the city and on a bikeway, and it's been shown at the Northland property in Wallfam. That results in far fewer trips than if you were building in a greenfield somewhere out in the outer suburbs. We are also bringing them close to shopping, and we are adding more shopping right on the property. This is a very green, very smart, very complicated permit that we spent a whole lot of time on. In two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, we discussed the heck out of it. This change is relatively minor. I sat through all those hearings, and this was much less complicated. And then just to, you know, just a final little thing on this, this is going to be a great development if it gets built. It'll be a real asset to the neighborhood. It will allow us to have eight-hundred-and-eighty new apartments. It will allow, they will be very green.
You're out of time, Council Downs, you're out of time. Would you like a little more time?
If I could have a minute.
Sure. All in favor of granting Council Downs additional minute, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Go ahead, please, Council Downs.
It'll be sustainable, it'll retain the historic Mill Building, and it will beat like heck the current dirt lot that is there now that is unoccupied. I urge my colleagues to consider this carefully, but also to support this permit on which we have spent already a whole lot of time. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Downs. Council Wright?
Northland is developing a commercial zone into mostly rental housing units. Business tax base brings in so much more net money than residential units. We have a very limited business/commercial zones throughout the city, and it has been decreasing from sixteen percent to eleven percent over the past ten years. The city tax burden is then carried by the residential units, making it more difficult for families to stay here and new families to afford to buy in Newton. Look at Watertown. They are building up their commercial sector. I own a two-family, and my Watertown property taxes decreased twenty-two percent this year. I don't expect this to happen in Newton, but we need to be proactive and protect our existing commercial areas because it will be extremely difficult to convert residential to commercial down the road. I'm very disappointed with the present Northland project. When Northland was originally approved, I wanted it to be built in phases just like Washington Village and Andrew Square, Boston. The project is very similar to Northland, the number of units, retail space, et cetera, but in a smaller footprint. Washington Village is being built in three phases and could react to the environment as needed. Northland is now taking most of the commercial out, even though it won't be finished for years. The market for commercial may change over time. Northland is a great location for work-life community. I would appreciate even more increase in open space in this amended project. In the future, if the commercial market returns, commercial space could be built in that area. I'm disappointed with the reduced underground parking. Developers want to make money. They tell us they must have more to make a project work. Look at three-eighty-six Watertown Street. They said they needed the fourth story to make the project viable. Their request was withdrawn after reading the room. They are now building to the original special permit. Northland could have been so much better if it fulfilled the original issued special permit. I'm not against the eight-hundred-and-twenty units of housing, but the city is squandering prime real estate away from commercial space. I would have liked to have seen the residential buildings not decreased in height, but reduced in footprint, with the extra space going towards the open area for future commercial purposes. I'm voting no on this special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Wright. Next, I have Council Farrell.
Thank you, President Laredo. As hard as I tried, my remarks will probably take about three and a half minutes, and I asked permission to-
Why don't we give Council Farrell an additional two minutes so he doesn't have to come back to us? All in favor of doing so, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Go ahead, please, Council Farrell.
Thank you all. I will vote in favor of Northland's request to modify its special permit plan. I believe Northland's position that the current market for commercial development is highly uncertain. I also believe that it is unreasonable, one, to ask that they build commercial space anyway in the hope that the market will return more quickly than we know, or, two, to ask them to hold construction in the Oak Street building aside until the market returns. As a final effort to reconcile my and my neighborhood's concerns about Northland's position, I met with Vice President of Development, Ken Gonzalez, and Vice President of Construction, Mike Maderos, last Thursday afternoon to walk the area that was the original site of five residential buildings that Northland now proposes to eliminate as those apartments would now be moved to the Oak Street building. The road we walked uncovers the significant new infrastructure that Northland has spent several years and tens of millions of dollars creating.
Can we just slow down just a little? I can hear you, but I, it's just, can you slow down?
What?
I think if you'd slow down, Council Farrell, Council Baker's requesting.
Thank you. I will slow down. I was trying to stay within my three and a half minutes.
If you need more time, we'll give you more time.
Okay. The road we walked then covers the significant new infrastructure that Northland has spent several years and tens of millions of dollars creating. It would have serviced the buildings that they are now eliminating, but also many that will be built, as well as the recreational area with the new splash pool. Given the significant cost of creating all this infrastructure that will in part not be utilized by the proposed plan, I asked Northland whether Northland, in the future, might ever consider building new commercial space in this area. As you know, Northland cannot add to the number of residences per Newton zoning laws. Mr. Gonzalez clearly was not in a position to answer this question officially, but did say that if conditions change, and because Northland already has the right to build commercial space on the property, it is not out of the question that they might consider creating new commercial space. With absolutely no commitments from Northland, I believe that the possibility of adding significant new commercial space continues to exist. Secondly, I asked why not leave the Oak Street building conversion to the end of the project, so that if the market changes in the next couple of years as they build the other new residential retail buildings, they could maintain their plan of making Oak Street commercial. Together, Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Maderos explained, and I hope I get this right, that whether Oak Street is used for residential or commercial, it must be done first. The heavy machinery required to do the work on Oak Street building must be completed before the next new buildings and public spaces can- before the next new buildings and public spaces can be finished. Consequently, they must commit to their decision now. I believe that Northland's decision to change the focus to primarily residential was not cavalier, but seriously considered. I also believe that as businesspeople, if the opportunity to create more profitable space comes forward in the future, they will consider it seriously. In that instance, their only choice would be to create commercial space. I believe that we must approve Northland project now, but we must learn from the entire multi-year experience to constructurally work and plan productively with developers in the future. We must take a more forward-looking approach that balances commercial development with residential expansion to strengthen our tax bases. We must very intentionally streamline our zoning, ease permitting, and proactively market appropriate sites for innovative, sustainable commercial and residential use. Newton's future depends on smart intentional planning, not reactive change. Planned balanced development is critical for funding essential services and high-quality schools without overburdening homeowners. Commercial development brings jobs and attracts new businesses. This will build a diverse, resilient local economy without creating the essential, without changing the essential residential character of our neighborhoods. Let's begin by moving forward now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Farrell. Counselor Humphrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just confine my remarks to responding to a couple of points that I heard that I had trouble agreeing with. So first, on the traffic impact, you know, and this is, I think you can analyze it any way you want in terms of whether you're looking at the current proposal before us or the previous one or whatever, but I think it all kind of comes out the same. And I think that's a big reason why, you know, the three Ward five counselors where this project is are on board with these amendments. In terms of traffic impact for Needham Street, I appreciate that the counselor, the Ward counselor from Ward four made the journey all the way across to Needham Street to check it out. But, you know, as the Ward counselor for Ward five, the Ward counselor across the street from Ward eight, we're on board with this because the reality is that this proposal before us now, in terms of traffic, is better than the original proposal, even if it's worse than a gigantic empty site, which doesn't have a whole lot of traffic impact. Literally, anything developed here, especially commercial, would affect traffic. That was a huge reason that past proposals for giant commercial developments there have failed because everyone was really worried, understandably, about, you know, the traffic coming in and out of the site for 100% commercial projects and so forth. So we're always trying to balance with these type of things, a lot of complicated and sometimes conflicting priorities. How do we bring more revenue to the city while not making life unmanageable for the people who already live here? And this brings us to the second point, the idea that we're somehow squandering something. I think this amendment is helpful to balancing both of those things, you know, traffic and commercial and whatever else. But it's important to be realistic about the realities of commercial demand. And I would bring up a comparison here. We can't wishfully force the presence of an industrial tax base in this city, right? That's also gone away, and there are market reasons for that. And there's a big national discussion happening right now about whether or not you can force factories to relocate into certain places that they have left. We can't make commercial happen on every single possible site that we might want it in the sizes that we would want it, when we want it, just by magic. Empty sites, the way our tax code works, do not generate revenue. This amendment is guaranteed some revenue from this area of this very large site. So the idea that we're squandering something, I think, doesn't really add up here. Yes, I would love to have the commercial tax revenue, but I can't make it just happen because I would like it to happen. And I'm, you know, yes, there are maybe other cases on certain other projects where you could say that maybe things weren't, you know, represented totally above board. I think you, when we're talking about a project of this size, and we're all looking around at the office market, and we all have access to the same facts and data, it's pretty speculative to say, oh, it's going to be X, Y, and Z later. So that's the end, and I would encourage folks to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Humphrey. I have Counselor Lucas Malachi-Lobavitz and Albright Gads.
Thank you, Mr. President. I voted yes on this amendment in committee. I'm going to vote yes again tonight. And I didn't explain the reasons why in committee, so I will explain them now. The first issue is, I guess it's the elephant in the room. It's the traffic. If we were voting on the original special permit from 2019, I think we all know I would have voted no. But the reason why I would have voted no was because my primary concern for the original special permit was the traffic. I did not believe that Needham Street could handle all of that traffic, and I still believe that. The amendment reduces the traffic. I think Counselor Humphrey already mentioned that. It's going to reduce it. It's not going to be perfect on Needham Street in a couple of years, but this amendment makes it a little better, and that helps address my original problem with the original special permit is the traffic. Counselor Farrell mentioned about the loss of commercial office space. I am disappointed that we are losing 188,000 square feet of commercial office space. I was pressing the petitioner, I think it was in the first or second public hearing, why can't they do retail or mixed use in the Mill Building, Building One? Why can't they keep some office space in the Mill Building? And it's quite complicated. And the reason why it's because banks aren't lending the money for new commercial office space. Since COVID, there's been no growth of new commercial office space that's been built since 2020. And that is why they can't do office space right now. I'm disappointed. I wanted the city to be more proactive with that, with the office space. I wanted them to work with the petitioner and trying to find tenants to go into that building, and we could have kept some of that commercial office space, but that did not happen, and I am very disappointed. The last thing I want to say is, and I mentioned this at the last public hearing, is the shuttle. The shuttle is part of the TDM, and they were, the petitioner was, in my opinion, a little wishy-washy on the shuttle, operating in the weekends. If this amendment is approved, and if this project is built, I hope the 24 of us can continue to press the petitioner so that they provide the shuttle on weekends, so that folks can go from the site to Newton Highlands and back. So that's all I want to say, and that's all I have, but I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lucas. I have Counselors Malachi-Lobavitz, Albright Gads, Lipoff, and Leary. Counselor Malick.
Thank you. I don't think it's our job to insulate companies, whether they're large corporations or small speculators, from the, okay, from the risks of real estate development. Corporations prioritize fast paybacks, but our job is to look out for the long-term health of the city. Our number one issue is how to pay for the cost of city services that residents expect, including the 65% of the city budget that goes to the schools. Anything that replaces commercial uses with residential makes that more difficult in the future. We can't keep lamenting the loss of commercial tax base and continue to approve projects, or in this case, an amendment that replace commercial with residential. Accepting the loss of 193,200 square feet of office space because of current weak demand and current high vacancy rates is short-term thinking for the city. Even if it takes six to 10 years for the office market to absorb current supply, according to Kimmern, but the city's, the city's time horizon should be longer, more like 40 or 50 years. We certainly take a long view when asking for electrification of new buildings. If the Sacco-Petti building converts to residential, we'll likely never get it back as commercial, even when demand for office space recovers. We're not asking Northland to build a new office building from scratch. We're asking them to retain an existing building as commercial space. There seems to be a lack of imagination or effort to market the Sacco-Petti building either as office space that will be easier to get to than downtown Boston, when the Mass Pike-Aulston project makes commuting into Boston even worse, or for other uses that serve a need, like daycare, adult daycare, fitness and physical therapy, entertainment, or for-profit education businesses. The stream of emails urging us to approve more housing interspersed with emails begging us to provide whatever funding the schools need has been striking. How many writers realize that losing commercial property now will hurt our ability to fund schools in the future, even though we may get one-time building permit fees upfront? Between this site and the Chalmont 40B, Northland alone will have converted over 29 acres of purely commercial property to almost entirely residential. At the same time, they will profit from Newton's reputation for good schools. But many of the parents who wrote to us told us they moved to Newton, at least in part for our schools, and they were disappointed, thinking they'd made a mistake and were considering moving. Northland should consider whether, by contributing to Newton's shrinking commercial tax base, they are diminishing the long-term appeal of their residential properties. So I will be voting no.
Thank you, Counselor Malick, and Counselor Lobavitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't want to repeat, and I don't want to, and I won't repeat, the points that Counselor Downs made in terms of some of the advantages of this project. Although tonight, I intend to vote to support the Land Use Committee's recommendation to approve this amendment to the special permit already granted, I want to share in as brief a way as I can my reasoning for doing so. Let me say at the outset that in my brief tenure as a city councillor, this is the most difficult decision I have made. The challenge of the decision, of the decision on this amendment is assessing the probability of multiple unknowns. Given that, given that uncertainty, the question before us is not what the ideal state is for our city and its residents. The question is, what is the scenario that has the most certainty to benefit our city? If the ideal, we're increasing commercial space on this property, and I do believe it is, even that outcome has its downsides with the projected higher impact on traffic and parking on neighborhood streets. Whether we grant the amendment or not, the original special permit creates the same burdens on the neighborhood. We councillors have done everything we responsibly can, including at the last Land Use Committee meeting, to mitigate those downsides. And I support continuing to do that, as Counselor Lucas has suggested. Clearly, we would have preferred the added revenue to the city that fully rented or reasonably rentable commercial space would bring. But if the market for commercial space is not as positives, as positive as we would hope, an empty undeveloped Mill Building might not be assessed at the full commercial rate. If that space over the next several years is more likely to be rented as residential, as I do, then the revenue to the city would not be substantially less than the added commercial revenue. Furthermore, as a strong advocate for affordable housing, the additional affordable units is to be welcomed. Finally, I want to emphasize that the need for more commercial property in Newton is more imperative than ever, and I look forward to supporting a major effort to accomplishing this.
Thank you, Counselor Lobavitz. Next, I have Counselor Albright, followed by Counselor Gads.
Thank you, Mr. President. So contrary to Counselor Block's opening statement that he never goes or hardly ever goes to Needham Street, I go to Needham Street all the time, multiple times in a week. I go there for the wonderful shops, to buy clothes, places to eat, places to become more beautiful, places to buy kitchen supplies. I mean, Needham Street is literally one of our premier shopping streets and commercial streets in Newton. I hope we don't judge any part of Newton by rush hour traffic. I mean, rush hour traffic is horrible, not just in Newton and in Massachusetts, but all over the country. So judging Needham Street by what happens between four and six is not, not the right metric to use. I also think that, I think I heard Counselor Malachi saying that Needham Street project, this Northland project would reduce our tax base. I'm not quite sure how that works because I think it will increase our tax base, not only for the residential, but for the, the tens of thousands of commercial spaces that it will be adding. So I hope that we will approve this tonight. If we do want more commercial development and more large developments in Newton, we as a city council have to approve this project and be prepared to be nimble in approving projects in the future. So I hope we will approve this tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Albright. Counselor Gads, followed by Counselor Lipoff.
Tonight, I will be voting yes to the, to approving Northland's request to amend their issued special permit. How I wish the original 2019 special permit had been fully exercised, a real model of a live workplace site. Although in my world, my fantasy world, it would be reduced by 25% to augment the site functionality and traffic. But we are where we are, in a changed world, being required to respond to our collective reality. Yes, there is a real reason to lament the loss of the office space in the Mill Building at the Northland site and the loss of that potential revenue, but we need Northland to move forward in an expeditious manner so that we, as a city, may realize the tax revenue from the site. In speaking today with a well-informed resident, we need to consider and think through how we will use Northland's mitigation dollars to improve the last mile walkability, bikeability to the T, specifically the walking path to the closest T stop, the Elliott T stop behind the fire station. And finally, on a personal level, I'm truly saddened by the loss of the public access to the only remaining historic building on the Northland site. As I've said many times, the interior renovations within the Mill Building are, in my mind, phenomenal, work to be treasured and appreciated by many, not just by a few. This will be a loss for the Newton community. Many wish Northland to succeed, but more importantly, we as a city need Northland to succeed.
Thank you, Counselor Gads. Counselor Lipoff?
Thank you. I won't be redundant here. I'd just like to point out the excellent point that Counselor Lobavitz made, that the revenue, the tax revenue from an empty or half-empty office building is not going to be much different, or could be less than a fully occupied residential building. I'm paraphrasing for what he said. And I just want to point out that the comments made by Councillors Farrell and Humphrey really combined, really nailed why this is so important and why voting yes tonight is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lipoff. Two others, Counselor Leary, then Oliver, and then seeing no one else, we're going to take this to a vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Really, a lot of great comments on what I think is a wonderful project. Yes, it is diminished, but it'll still bring significant tax dollars to our city as we, this budget season, struggle to fund city services, especially our schools. And I'm happy to hear comments about enhancing and encouraging our commercial tax base. I'm glad that it seems like that's suddenly something we care about. And when we look, when I look back at the Village Center Overlay District, that was one of its big goals. So keep in mind that the decisions we make on our land uses come back to reverberate and hit us, and we're feeling that this year, we'll feel it next year, too. We really have to think long-term. And this project is a project that will enhance the city, reduce our footprint. It's a very green city, green development, and actually, one of my favorites that I think we've seen over the last, you know, 12 years. So I'm so encouraged that so many of us understand that and will be supporting it. And keep in mind that this did go to ballot, and the majority of our voters did also support it. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Leary. Counselor Oliver, then Counselor Farrell has a couple more thoughts, and then we're going to, then we're going to vote it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm only rising because I do intend to vote no, unfortunately, on this project, and I need to explain why.
And I need to explain why. First off, this, I've heard a lot of comparisons tonight. This isn't about the housing. This isn't about moving quickly. This isn't about keeping an empty lot. None of those are really relevant comparisons. It's not going to stay empty. We already have 800, I believe it's 800, units of housing approved here. Really, from my perspective, and I've heard a lot of you say this, we all want and need this project to succeed, in whatever form it takes. And it's important for us to recognize, and a few of us have said it tonight, I'll repeat it because it bears repeating, nobody knows what's going to happen in six months. The office market could come back in a year and a half. But we won't be building it here. That much we will know. And as far as I'm concerned, I've also heard a lot of people talk about the benefits of this property in its original form and its current special permit as having been promoted as a live-work-play site. I believe that that fits very well, or perhaps better, than the amendment does in achieving our goals. We all know that this city is facing budgetary challenges. I believe that, as a council, we need to pay attention to that starting now, not the next project. As much as I know there will be a next project, and I assume that'll be part of that conversation, too. But I want everybody here to kind of hear me say this. This is probably the most positive no vote that I'm going to cast. I really want this project. We need this project to succeed. I just think the current special permit, special permit is better than the amended version. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Oliver. Counselor Farrell, you're going to get the last word. You have about one minute left.
Thank you, President. Counselor Lucas mentioned that we, all 24, need to pay attention and encourage Northland to maintain the transportation system they have committed to. I would just like to say that there is no project that is going to solve our transportation problems. But we, as the 11th largest city in Massachusetts, and a body of 24 city councillors and one mayor, have a lot of power to say to the one person who can control transportation issues in this state, the governor, that while we support housing and commercial development, we cannot do those without appropriate transportation support. And there is an instance right here where we could go to the governor and say, Needham Street, we need buses, or something, but certainly buses, on Needham Street, maybe Oak Street also. But we are not powerless to go to the state as a body of 24 elected officials and hopefully the mayor, to say to the governor, we will remember what you do in support of our efforts next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Farrell. Counselor Baker? And, and, and I'm going to-
And I will speak slowly.
You're still going to get your three minutes, Counselor Baker, so go ahead.
I just want to say I appreciate the comments made by colleagues tonight. I just want to indicate that I'll support the item, but I do want to indicate my appreciation for Counselor Block to bring up and raise the issues of traffic and how it affects the community, even if he doesn't live in the ward. But the support of the ward councillors from the area is a decisive matter for me, so I'll be supporting that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, may we call the roll, please?
Counselor Albright?
Aye.
Counselor Baker?
Aye.
Counselor Bigsby?
Aye.
Counselor Block?
No.
Counselor Danberg?
Aye.
Counselor Downs?
Aye.
Counselor Farrell?
Aye.
Counselor Gentile? Counselor Gads?
Aye.
Counselor Greenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Grossman?
Aye.
Counselor Humphrey?
Aye.
Counselor Kalas? Counselor Kelly?
Aye.
Counselor Kriensman?
Aye.
Counselor Leary?
Aye.
Counselor Lipoff?
Aye.
Counselor Lobavitz?
Aye.
Counselor Lucas?
Aye.
Counselor Malachi?
No.
Counselor Mickley?
Aye.
Counselor Oliver?
No.
Counselor Wright?
No.
President Laredo?
Aye.
The motion passes 19 to 4 with one absent.
Thank you. Motion from Counselor Kelly to adjourn, please. We are adjourned at 9:41 PM. Thank you all, have a good evening.